All right. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, October 28th, City Council Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press in public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me in standing if you can for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight and to do the business of our community, and just thank you for the opportunity we have to serve this community. Just pray that you would lead and guide our conversations and decisions that are made here tonight, in your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, you want to do vocal?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Gosian.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a question?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Sue Cotton.
You ought to be sitting here.
I think it's on. Do I need to?
Usually I'm not requested to speak louder, but my three minutes is ticking. So I'm Sue Cotton, Two Sand Dollar in Wildwood. I'm here with my husband tonight. We're asking for action from the council specifically on the first responders' pay benefits and attrition. As you know from my email comments in the workshop, I messaged you earlier, I have a long history with the first responders, specifically the fire service, literally four generations. So it's something near and dear to my heart. Since 2021, we've called Isle of Palms our home, but since 2020, or actually 2005, we've owned properties and we have paid taxes, and we have a vested interest in this community. We've listened and learned a lot about mobility, traffic, beach renourishment, all the things. And what we do know is a lot of those things have been addressed, and we thank you for the drainage over in Wildwood. That's been very beneficial. But one thing that continues to be kicked down the road is the firefighters' compensation and their benefits. I know that if you've never needed them, you may not understand the value that they bring, and if you have, then you know while I'm here and while I don't want Julie Nesbit to stand alone and the few brave that have come out to discuss this. We know that there's an election coming up. We know that some of you will stay, some of you will not, some of you will be replaced by others. Everyone has their own agenda. But what's really important here is that the safety of our community will never change. It has to be first and foremost. If we begin to have safety issues, if they are violence, if they are, we don't have enough first responders to take calls, we don't have the right equipment, whatever the reason, we don't have to worry about tourists or people coming to buy. They're always going to come. Those people are always going to come, but it won't maintain what I've heard each one of us talk about and what we want here, which is community and safety and residents first, right? All of those things are important. So I am asking, I am begging for you to not just put it on the agenda. Have a workshop on it. I've seen you do great things. I was here a couple, last week I guess it was, you talked about for 45 minutes to an hour about beach renourishment. Let's make this as important as beach renourishment. I can't imagine not thinking that safety, people just don't understand what the risk is. They do not understand that if you don't have the right number or the right qualified people, that when you call for that heart attack at 2:00 in the middle of the night, you're going to be waiting for somebody to come and pick you up from Charleston County. So it, my three minutes is up.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you get what it is. Take a look. I'm going to give you the rest of my comments. I'm signing up for this. I've got a lot of experience with the issues.
Susan Smith.
Thank you, councilmembers, for this chance to speak. As detailed in a recent front page story in The Post and Courier, investigators with the State Department of Environmental Services recently determined that construction materials from the multimillion dollar Ocean Club renovation project in Wild Dunes had escaped from netting at the site and had entered the ocean and beach environments as early as June and worsening over time into September. I brought examples so you can see for yourselves. These foam balls were found mixed into marsh reeds and sand for four to five miles from the pier well into Wild Dunes. Because they are so small, they are extremely hard to collect, and they can look like food to fish and birds. Closer to the Ocean Club work site around Mariners Walk, I also discovered other kinds of construction debris on the beach, including orange spray foam, what appears to be drywall, and chunks of styrofoam that is easily disintegrates. This is, these are just samples of the large numbers of items that have impacted the environment. When I alerted the city to discovery of the foam balls, Public Works arranged for their litter contractor to do a special cleanup, and they filled more than 50 to 60 large bags of marsh reeds polluted with debris. I'd like to thank the city for making that happen quickly, and our city administrator for stopping renovations at Ocean Club until workers established proper containment and removed a layer of topsoil with foam pollution embedded in it. However, I'm concerned with an Ocean Club Homeowners Association update that went out around the same time. The update complained that they must be, quote, "pulled away from production now that we are under a microscope," said that, quote, "given proximity to the water, it is impossible to have 100% containment," and sought to discourage Ocean Club homeowners from drawing attention to the pollution, suggesting that they, that rather than taking steps that cost everybody time and money, they pick up the litter themselves. I believe this episode deserves added scrutiny by the city, perhaps engaging the environmental advisory committee in looking what can be done, what can be done to prevent this kind of pollution from happening in the future. I believe this should include a closer look at proper containment, diligent enforcement of regulations, and the use of styrofoam and building materials, which I understand that workers are shaving and shaping on-site as they attach it to the building, which is why there are so many pieces that become litter around that area and wind up going into the ocean and around the beach. Thank you.
Dan Slatchiver.
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to speak. I'm, want to read into the record of the city's song about the city, and this was a letter that we wrote. We were both on the beach at my committee, and we were both involved in the city at alternative, and I agree with the recommendation to the beach. We've had this this week. Dear councilmembers, it has come to our attention, the agenda for Tuesday's City Council Meeting dated October 28th includes the consideration of a proposal from CSE for final design, bidding, and construction administration for a major renourishment project for $669,508 unbudgeted in FY '26, which shows on its FY '27 expense of $575,000. Being both island residents and having served as town members of the Alton Beach at my committee, we have strong concerns that we feel to address. As you will recall, the committee had concerns that relied solely on company CSE, which has been the company we've used for years, without getting at least a second opinion. Since their recommendations were presented to council at the beginning of 2025, there have been two separate alternative presentations to the city, one probably funded by residents of the island, and another funded by the city. Both have presented concerns with the current plans and offered alternatives of particular significance, is that both alternative companies also perform beach renourishment, monitoring, and protection, but also have a full-time engineering staff, something that we understand that CSE does not. While we appreciate CSE's longstanding role with the city, we believe it is in the city and the residents' best interest to at least consider one of the alternative. Our understanding is that today on Tuesday, the plan is to only consider CSE essentially disregarding the hard work and countless hours put into studying this very issue that we want to address. This is additionally concerning, as there was commentary in one of the alternate opinions criticizing CSE's outlook of the beach as overly optimistic, and voiced for the first time publicly that the conditions of the beach are severe and likely to get worse with time. They recommended solutions quite different from anything that CSE has offered to date. Further, as best we know, the second opinion provided and paid for by council has not yet been formally presented to council for discussion. While we agree that it's time to move urgently and quickly, we see no basis for a no-bid contract with CSE alone. Why not offer to all three of the companies to express interest? A formal bid solution with a 30-day turnaround process for this major undertaking by the island, and our view of their recommendations seems more appropriate, coupled with each provider advising when they will be ready to start the renourishment. In the event a vote is called for today, we would strongly encourage the CSE proposal be tabled with, excuse me, until alternatives are presented. This is a very large expenditure, and in addition to economics, we want to make sure that we have the best chance for our long and successful program. With all respect, with all due respect, moving forward at this point with CSE, without due diligence and without looking at the other firms and their bids represents a failure of duty of care and a breach of public trust, all of which we understand was the basis to create the committee and to create the set at the beginning. Thank you very much. My hand copies. Save again.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is presentations are first is an update on the South Carolina lobbying efforts. We have our state lobbyist here with us tonight, Boyd. I'll let you do some introductions and just talk to us about updates if you don't mind. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for having us. For those in the audience, public, I'm Boyd Brown with Tompkins Thompson &amp; Brown, Government Affairs. We're a lobbying firm, bipartisan lobbying firm in Columbia, specializes in state government relations. I have with me Warren Tompkins, Jim Merrill, and Campbell Mims, all in our office. Thank you all for allowing us to be here to update and ask, answer any questions of council. For the past several years, we've had the great pleasure of representing Isle of Palms in Columbia, and for those of you on council who were with us when we started, you know, we've come a long way. We were hired in the brouhaha over the connector in DOT, and that was in its 11th, probably 12th hour, you know, and then ensuing after that, we have gone to great lengths to repair relationships between the city and the state legislature, and now are now getting all of your return on your investment to the tune of several millions of dollars for everything from boardwalks to marina dredging to wastewater, or, excuse me, stormwater, to, and continuing to push the proverbial rock uphill on beach renourishment in Columbia. I know that is a big deal for everyone here, everyone on council. It is, as we know, council's top priority year in and year out to really address that issue, and, you know, as we all know, Isle of Palms and other beach communities like you are one part of a much larger state, and it takes a lot of convincing. We have a lot of friends in the House, a lot of friends in the Senate, Senator Campson and Representative Bustos do a great job advocating for this every year in the budget, and, you know, it's just, there are some leaders, particularly in the Senate, who are from the upstate who don't think large amounts of state tax dollars should be spent on beach renourishment. So it's just a matter of continuing to work on that. One thing that we have had some talks with as late as today with Representative Bustos is gathering the beach advocate communities, you know, from, you know, from the folly beaches to the Sullivan's Islands to, you know, even up to Davido and those places north of here, and asking for a, you know, widening the push and let us help take lead on that for the Isle of Palms to push those advocacy efforts in Columbia. But all that said, going back several years now, we've been successful in getting money in the state budget. This past year, there was an earmark hold, I would say. I don't want to call it a ban, because there's always talk that they plan on going back to earmarks. And now going forward, the earmark money will be, the priority will be given to municipalities and political subdivisions. So IOP will be prime, it will be in a prime position to get state dollars going forward. Historically, you've had everything from community groups to nonprofits and things of that nature, also asking for, you know, competing dollars, and now the priority will be put on political subdivisions. So now will be the time to really step up and ask for more dollars from the state through the appropriations process. Again, I'm here to answer any questions, to talk about concerns and priorities council has going forward. Y'all do a great job keeping us posted through Douglas, through staff, through each, each of you, you know, various ones of you seem to reach out to us whenever you'd want to. We are happy to do that. That is why we are there, and y'all do a great job representing these folks, so we are happy to represent you guys in Columbia. So with that, I'll gladly answer any questions y'all may have of us.
Boyd, don't you speak to anything coming up in the new legislative year that may need to be on our radar screen? I know short-term bill.
I mean, this is something that y'all are probably unfamiliar with, but there's an election coming up. No, not here, but next year in Columbia. So we'll see a lot of political priorities, the red meat stuff come up. There'll be everything from social issues to very, you know, politically driven issues that'll take top priority, and then once filing deadline's over, we'll see them get down to more of the brass tacks stuff. As I mentioned, the budget will, you know, they do have, you know, some dollars to spend this year, some extra dollars to spend, so we'll see some of that. You know, you always have your, you've got your Airbnb verbo issue that's always hanging out there, the short-term rental bill that's always hanging out there, you've got the LLC issue that's out there, and we continue to play defense on the bills that you guys don't like, and we've done that well. And, you know, more, you know, to y'all's needs, though, are these budget appropriations. And last year, they passed a proviso, holding off any of those state dollars, those state checks being cut until the first quarter of this coming year, because they passed the budget during the middle of the tariff debate in Washington. So some of the money that y'all are in line to get will be, get, it'll get cut, I think, January 2026, so you should see some of that coming down from the state, the money that y'all are in line to get. So, but outside of that, I would anticipate abortion being something that's discussed heavily in Columbia again this year, transgender rights probably being something discussed, and you kind of go down the litany of social issues. That'll be getting a lot of press, and then they'll, once filing's over, you know, they'll turn their sights back on to the meat and potato issues. Just something we see every two years, come to expect.
And Boyd, before we, we can open up for questions, but before we go tonight, I mean, we need to give you guys some direction for 2026 as the legislative session starts and kind of where we need to place some of our hopes on getting some funding. I mean, we've got our longer-term issues, the beach funding, ongoing beach funding, reduction of the ATACs percentage, you know, some revenue flexibility if the ongoing beach funding's not going to be there, and we've had these conversations for a couple of years now, so we need to keep those at the top of the list, but I mean, I think there are other earmarks if they come back that we could take.
Yeah, Mayor, we think Representative Bustos is on to something with gathering y'all with the other beach communities and really talking about a way to, you know, when you talk about beach renourishment, I mean, statewide, it's a very large number. It's not just y'all. I mean, you know, we're seeing erosion up and down the coast. So it's a very large number. So how do you go about addressing that? So it's not just, it can't just be Isle of Palms asking for that money, or else it's, I mean, quite frankly, it's very unlikely to happen to, in a meaningful amount. So it's got to be more of a concerted effort up and down the coast to get this to happen. So getting the beach communities together, making a more full-throated push to attain that revenue for the purposes of beach renourishment, and getting creative on some of those, on some of the ways to attain it, you know, I think is something worthy of discussion with you guys and the beach advocate. As I say beach advocates, there is a group called beach advocates, for those unaware, and y'all are members of it, but it should be a larger discussion point.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you all for being here tonight. Good update. We are an active part of the beach advocates group, and it's good to hear that, you know, Representative Bustos is going to try to bring that group together to energize it even more than what's been done in the past, to try to get more of a collective effort up and down the beach, because that ranges from, you know, we have membership from North Myrtle Beach, you know, down to Seabrook, Hilton Head, those areas there also. Do you think that we, as a municipality, have asked enough for what we need with beach renourishment funds?
Look, I would, I would say that the drum has been beaten very loudly in Columbia by, everybody knows IOP wants beach renourishment money.
Okay, so it's not been, it's not.
It's not, I mean, it's nothing against y'all. It's just, there is a fundamental belief by some in very high leadership that, and I'll, to quote them, "Why are we going to dump state tax dollars into the ocean?" I mean, that's just the way they think about it. I mean, they're from the upstate, they don't see what y'all see on a daily basis, they, you know, they would rather their roads get fixed with this money up there, they'd rather school, this money go to schools, law, I mean, they have their, they have their priority list, you know? So it's just a matter of, when you, it's more of a building a crescendo of support for this, and to do that, I mean, you know, if you start going down the beach advocacy community, all of a sudden, you've got this delegation asking for it, and this delegation, and this delegation, and if you get Ori, Georgetown, Charleston, Berkeley, Buford, Collin, you know, all those counties, Jasper, all those counties asking for more beach dollars, then all of a sudden, you're talking about several dozen in number, and that's more than just, you know, love them to death, but, you know, let's give Chip Campson and Joe Bustos some help, you know, because, I mean, they're one of 46 or one of 124. Let's get them, you know, several dozen colleagues to support them in that effort.
I was born in Greenville, South Carolina, and couldn't get away from there fast enough and to move down to the coast, and I've been here for 41 years, but it is good to hear that it hasn't fallen on deaf ears. We have made the effort to get those funds, and it's kind of ironic to me that, you know, and I'm preaching to the choir here, I know, but upstate politicians who enjoy coming to the beach two or three weeks per year with their family don't want to protect what they come here to enjoy during the summer.
Well, Councilmember Streetman, I will also say, it hasn't gone unnoticed. You know, I'll give the mayor credit, he reached out unprovoked to the PRT director, you know, supporting his ask for beach renourishment money from the governor's office in this upcoming budget, and it was timely enough where I think he had a tranche of money for beach renourishment purposes, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, and he turned around and said, "Look, I got this money, I'm going to earmark it at Isle of Palms." So, you know, he's going to turn around and earmark some, it seems like or already has earmarked some of that money for the purposes of beach renourishment. Now, it might be a drop in the proverbial bucket of sand, but, I mean, every little bit helps at this point, so.
Thank you. Jan.
Following up on that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a million and a half in that request, so it's not a drop in the bucket.
Two buckets of sand, yeah.
It's a big bucket, but it's, it's still something. Thank you. The second thing is with my thing, going, being on the beach is wonderful, getting to the beach is another issue, and so I'm wondering, is there any way we can optimize our ability to get funds for traffic control and signal design and some roadway improvements related to, I don't want to say beach access, if those are the dirty words, but.
Well, Councilperson Anderson, I mean, if you think back to where we started on getting involved here, and it was on the fight with DOT, their plan was more access for everyone in South Carolina to enjoy y'all's beaches, and, you know, driving over that connector, and no offense to the cyclists in the group, but every time I drive over, it's like, you made it harder to get here with all these pedestrian and bike lanes, and, you know, it ought to be more traffic lanes for emergency vehicles during peak hours and things of that nature, and ought to be a better, maybe a flow design. So I think maybe revising that is a statutory change, but revising that, I think enough time has passed where we can sit down with those in the Senate who may have had some angst, there's been change of leadership at DOT. I think the timing's probably better now than it has been in recent years to sit down with all those involved then to improve the traffic situation out here now, so.
Scott.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Boyd, do you see any dollar opportunities in more in the infrastructure side of things for sewer deployment, water plant, or road improvements or things of that nature, where if we, and we've got vehicles, large vehicles and replacements to the, for public safety, if we could get some grant money there, it might free up some money elsewhere for us to be moving things around.
That's a, that's a great question, yes. You know, while, while the big ask is always beach renourishment money, you got to look at it the way we look at it. So when we look at the state budget, kind of like when y'all look at your budgets, a lot of the dollars that the state legislature gets are earmarked from other places, from whether it's federal money coming down or whatnot, they can only be spent on certain things. So each, each subcommittee in the Senate Finance or House Ways and Means Committee has some dollars allocated to them that they're allowed to spend. Well, you know, when we keep reaching into PRT, PRT, or partial recreation tourism dollars, so are so many other people that we might not get as much, but then there's this law enforcement and criminal justice and emergency services budget that we ought to be reaching into. I mean, you know, I think a couple of years ago, we got one municipality, we represented a half million dollars for a couple new ambulances, and, you know, another one, some money for some police cruisers and things of that nature, but that was money that they didn't have to spend, that they could shift those resources to something else.
So to follow up on that, we've got, if I look at the out years, we've got $5 to $10 million in different, either vehicles for picking up public services, for the fire department, for the police department. Should we be stuffing that funnel with requests now?
Well, you should be asking for requests for emergency vehicles now, because the back order for emergency vehicles is so severe that it takes several years to get those emergency vehicles once the order has been placed. So if you're not getting in line now, then you're going to have very outdated vehicles several years down the, down the line.
So how do, how do we do that?
Just tell us, just, we'll get you the form, and you fill out what you, Douglas knows what that form looks like. We've been using it for a couple of years now, so. It'll be, it'll be an earmark request, and we'll, what we'll do is we'll take it to, whether it be Representative Bustos or Senator Campson or both, and ask them to ask for that, so.
Thank you. Jan.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for being here, and we appreciate it. I was just wondering, do you think there'll be any movement this year in the legislative session on the possibility of moving some ATACs funds, driving that percentage that has to be paid to designated DMO, and to where people, municipalities can use it for infrastructure and salaries for first responder personnel and things like that?
Yeah, sure. So that's typically, the CVB and others like them around the state are very politically active and influential. It will take a concerted effort to change that, so the conversation with the beach advocates would be worthwhile to have, and I would also say, meeting with the CVB and others to address that and figure out how they can work with y'all to make that happen in a meaningful way would be, would be worthy of a discussion.
But it does have to pass through the state house?
There would be some directives from the state legislature to direct them to do it, yeah, so, and they are pretty strong politically, so it would be, it's a tough, it's, I mean, it'll take a hard swing of the bat to get that done, but, but I think it'd be worthwhile to have conversations with them to come up with some ideas to how to address that.
So Boyd, some of the conversations we've had, you know, whether we're going to talk first responder equipment, or beach access path improvement, or drainage and infrastructure, are there other things that are more palatable than beach renourishment that we may could hit on in the state budget?
I mean, you know, the appetite in the state budget these days are roads and workforce development and infrastructure. So if you look at that, y'all, y'all don't have a whole lot of manufacturing going on on Isle of Palms, at least legal manufacturing that you're aware of, so, you know, so outside of that, you know, not a whole lot of workforce development going on out here. What I would suggest looking at is some transportation. going on out here. What I would suggest looking at is some transportation matters, some infrastructure matters, because there is always money for transportation and infrastructure projects. You know, sometimes you have to nickel and dime it, and you get, you know, 2 million this year and 5 million next year and things of that nature. But, yeah, I mean, and I think that if we look back over time, that's where we've been most successful. I mean, y'all's infrastructure looks a little bit different than, say, the town of Windsboro, where, you know, there's, they're worried about sidewalks and roads. Y'all are worried about boardwalks and, and, you know, bridges. So, you know, so, so, yeah, I mean, I think you definitely have to look at that. The law enforcement money, you know, there's always a heart there for, for law enforcement, whether it be, or I say law enforcement, first responder money. So whether it be fire departments, who, somebody spoke to that earlier, or EMS, you know, there, there are always ways to address that. I guess y'all don't have your own EMS, but you would have fires, fire department and police, so.
Boy, just for your information, we're going to take action tonight. The PRT grant request needed a resolution of council, so we'll vote on that tonight. And we hopefully are getting that in by the end of the week from our request standpoint. We're getting some letters of recommendation from Bustos and Goldfinch and Camson. So just so you know, that'll go in this week.
Well, I will say, y'all are in a very good position, because the subcommittee chairman on the House Ways and Means Committee is from the other side of Charleston County, but he is sympathetic to Charleston area concerns. So as you put in PRT request, Representative Stavranakis from over in West Ashley, it's always good to try to look after people from the Charleston neck of the woods.
Boy, thank you all for what you do for our community.
We thank y'all, so.
Warren and Jim, Cam, I'll thank y'all. You can run right to me, and y'all have had a long day between the port and us and everything else. Next item is a beach project status update. Mr. Trainor, Dr. Barano, you, you just in the audience tonight?
Thank you for having me again tonight. Just a quick update from two weeks ago when we met here last. We approved some additional sandbags for the eroded areas following the two-week kind of Easter event that we had. I think a total of around 660 bags were approved. And after that meeting, we got in touch with Randy, and Randy did a good job of mobilizing some extra crews. He brought in two additional crews to fill bags on site, so that operation has been going much better. And I believe as of this Thursday, all of the city's scope of bags will be placed. We did have kind of a blow the past two days. Mondays specifically, we had a two-foot tide surge on top of the predicted tide. Today, we're still up close to a foot and a half. So I looked at the beach today, kind of going from north to south. The area around Porticol and Seascape, which has been the focus of the, the north end for the city, held up very well. The sand that was placed behind the dunes there really remains intact. The sandbag revetment around those two buildings still looks good. We still have some additional bags to place at Porticol this week to extend that area to the south. The Ocean Club area, obviously, they're still kind of in a world of hurt and need to do something to help keep the ocean out from under their, their building. That's a, now that most of the scaffolding has been removed, that's something that the city could consider, but they still have some, some concerns that would just make me have a little bit of caution about working around their construction. But I do understand that, I think they're working with Randy to add some additional bags on their own, as well as the golf course area. Beachwood is still getting hit pretty hard in the western half of it specifically. The bags were being overtopped by wave run-up today, even about two hours after high tide. Largely, the mound of bags is still there, but they have shifted around some. So we have specifically kind of two properties, two to three properties, where the bags have settled below kind of the city's threshold there. The shoal is attached. I'll kind of jump to the sand part of it. We also had authorized two weeks ago, movement of 25,000 cubic yards of sand. To date, about half of that material has been moved. We successfully were able to close the gap separating the shoal, the western arm of the shoal to the beach. That did a couple of things. It's allowed for equipment to move along the western end, which has helped speed up the sand placement and transfer. They're not having to go all the way around the north side of the shoal. It's lowering the crest of the shoal on the outside, which is going to let the shoal continue to move in faster. And it's putting some sand out in front of the, behind and in front of the sandbags at both ends. To date, they've moved about half of the sand quantity. So they've moved about 3,000 yards up to the Ocean Club, Porticol, Seascape area, and they've moved about 4, 4,500 cubic yards to the Beachwood area. A lot of that sand right now, Beachwood, some of it they put behind the bags to try to give them some support through the storm. They're trying to work as much as we could before the storm hit. We were moderately successful, but they haven't been, they weren't able to work yesterday because its shoal never got exposed. So today, they were looking to see if, could they get out on the shoal? If not, they're going to harvest some of the material from the, the intertidal beach where the shoal's attached, just to kind of keep progress moving. Down at the south end, they were working today on reinforcing some of the low areas there, and then continuing the two additional properties, based off of some continued erosion that we're seeing on the very western or southern end. We may need some additional bags there to get to our kind of eight-foot threshold that we're looking for. But overall, that end's holding up fairly well. South of Fifth Avenue, the beach is actually gaining a good bit of sand in the dry sand burn between Fifth and about Second. Right at Second, moving further around is where the focus of erosion is there at the south end. We are also noticing a pretty extensive erosional arc around Sixth and Seventh Avenues right now that's formed over the past couple of weeks, right where the dredge pipe is sitting, waiting for the Corps to continue placing sand, so.
Stephen, when are they going to start up again? Do we know what they're, what is the logistics on them? What's holding them up and what's, what's happening there?
There were some safety concerns that the Corps shut them down for. I believe those have been addressed, but I'm honestly not sure if or when they're going to start back up. Every time that we're kind of told it'll be-
Did you say if or when?
I did. Every time they're, we're told that it might be next week, something happens and it doesn't, we don't see any sand out on the beach. So I'm not very optimistic that we're going to see much more sand from the Corps unless kind of things change with that operation.
At all?
Doug, do you have a different opinion on that?
Well, I guess I would just say, the, the, that particular project, the spoils, kind of getting the sand out of the spoil site has been, as you all know, problematic from day one and challenging from day one. They, I guess the, so to Stephen's point, I don't know that they're going to get additional sand out of that project from this contractor. They have authorized a different project with harvesting sand out of the intercoastal waterway. That is a contractor they know, have good experience with, and that project is under contract to begin in January.
So I'm sorry, at the workshop, I think we said that there was another 350,000 cubic yards that were going to be dumped between Sixth and Ninth, or Fifth and Ninth. Is that now off the books?
Well, so, so that, so you have, I'm not sure if the project you're referencing is the Otten work or the other work.
It wasn't the dredge. It was in, I think it was in your slides from just two weeks ago.
Yeah. So from my understanding, the, the original work that has been ongoing, they still had somewhere around 200, 250,000 cubic yards left to pump out of the disposal islands. That's the quantity. I'm, I can't tell you where they're actually going to start back up or not. It's there. It's available. If they, if the contractor can perform the work, then it's there for them to do. The second project, I think, was originally scoped to be 300, up to 350,000. I think the Corps recently revised that. I don't know if that was based off a recent survey, but they pulled back on that to, I think, somewhere around 250,000 or so that will be coming out of the intercoastal waterway. So that's-
Can I just back up a minute? So we were at originally, the original project was 500,000. It went to 550,000. Then it went to 600,000. And now I think we've got 250,000 delivered at the south end, but that was like a dissolution and disappeared. So, and now it sounds like that the remaining 350,000 is, it's not coming, is what I'm hearing. Or it may not ever come.
From the original project, I'm not optimistic that it's going to come, from that original 500 that moved up to about 600,000.
And just a quick question, why are we hearing about this now, I guess?
I believe we've indicated that that operation has been struggling for a while.
If I just hadn't asked the question, we wouldn't even know that that 350,000 isn't coming.
I don't, well-
I'm sorry.
Scott, I don't think we know that for certain. I think, I think we are speculating that they've, they've been challenged all, all along the way. I don't think we know that it's not coming. I think we, it's, it's been a challenge.
So are they going to pull the pipes up?
Say again?
Are they going to pull their pipes up?
Not that, the last, the last update we got from the Corps was that they were going to start pumping again. So as of today, I think today, somebody indicated that there wasn't anybody on the site from, from Otten today, which is the first time that we've ever, I think that we've ever seen that.
And we were, we were counting on, I think, pushing 25,000 or 30,000 yards of that down to the south end of the beach of the new sand, and that's, that's not an option now, I'm guessing.
With this first contractor correct. And I agree with Doug. It's not that that decision to stop has been made. It's just, I feel like I've been telling you, yeah, the Corps is coming, the Corps is coming with sand, and they just keep not coming. So I don't want to keep telling you that they're doing that. Now, with this other contractor that's supposed to come in January or February, they'll be placing, you know, 250,000 yards in that same area, and we can utilize that sand to move to the south.
But that's dredge, right? That's, that's out of the intercoastal?
It's out of the intercoastal, correct.
I would also add that we, in having conversations with the Army Corps about an underperforming contractor, they have indicated that they have a bond for that work. If, if Otten is unable to complete the work, it would be their intention to sever ties, use that bond to engage a third, a third contractor to get that work done. Because they still need, at the end of the day, they still need the capacity out of those spoil sites. So I think the work-
Could be next year though, or something.
The work would happen. It just wouldn't happen in the timeframe that we've been expecting it to have.
I believe that's most of the update from what's the current conditions are. We do have the next king tide coming with the highest tide at 7.2 predicted in the harbor on November 6th. So we'll, you know, three or four days on either side of that is, depending on the weather, could be a potential impact event. So I just wanted to-
What's the date on those?
November 6th is the peak tide.
Is there something we or the residents can do that are at risk that we should be doing to help them prepare?
So right now, we, by this, the end of this week, we'll have placed all the bags that the city has already allocated. Trying to predict what, you know, will happen over the next 30 days until the next council meeting, you know, having the ability to place additional bags should the conditions warrant it, it would be a useful tool. You have the option at the east end, we still have the Shoal Management Project. We're moving some of that currently. We can expand that to either end of the island. That comes with risk. If we were to move 60,000 to 80,000 cubic yards of sand to the, the Beachwood area, I feel pretty confident that that sand will sustain that beach to finish out this shoal attachment, because we're really close and it's, it's contracting every day, at least the area, the original area that we're dealing with. But it's not a guarantee for sure. Similarly, at the east end of the island, that area has not been as erosional. It's been somewhat more stable over the past month. They are still losing sand, especially as you get past Ocean Club and now into the golf course. That area is losing more and more sand. So we could max out that permit, moving about another 120,000 yards or so to the tune of anywhere from probably around 800,000 or so. Again, that's all sand that nature's moving onshore for us. So it's a kind of a decision to, you know, keep maintaining with sandbags like we're doing at an incremental rate. We can increase the protection level or individual owners, and several of them have taken the opportunity to do this, add additional bags at their own expense, working under the city's permit, to bolster their protection above what the city has kind of established as our threshold. Anything that you do with sandbags will continue to require maintenance. They have just kind of shown that with these, when they're exposed to waves like the ones at Beachwood, they're just not capable of withstanding these kind of storm waves that are directly impacting it. At the south end of the beach, or even at the north end, you have a wider beach slope that's dissipating some of the wave energy. So by the time it gets to the bags, it's not near as energetic to move the bags around it as it, as it is right at Beachwood. So right now, that's kind of our biggest concern, is just the ongoing erosion forces at Beachwood.
So if people, if people want to put more sandbags, what, how do they go about doing that? Do they contact the city or you or the contractor?
I think the best path would be to contact the contractor in the city and copy them on it, on, hey, we'd like to add additional bags to our, our property. We'll have, their contractor of preference. They don't have to use a particular contractor, but they do have to operate under the regulations of the term bed for the beach compatible sand and where you can place them. But the city needs to keep a record of how many are going where so that we can keep the state informed.
Yeah. And Katie, I would just add to that. If it's, if it is a property that already has sandbags, there's an existing order in place for those, and those owners have just done that. Taking note, we've, we've documented the number of additional bags, and there's a requirement to remove those. We have had some property owners that are in an area that the city has not authorized bags. Those owners are reaching out directly to the state to try to get an emergency order on their own. So it depends a little bit, property to property, what their, what their status is.
Other questions? Stephen will be here for our next item in a minute. Thank you. Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes. We have a city council meeting on September 23rd, special city council meeting on October 14th, and a city council meeting workshop on October 14th also. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any edits, changes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. So old business, new business. Consideration of Beachwood removal contract with Trident Waste and Recycling for up to 156,000 for calendar year '26, and 81,900 for fiscal year '26. Let's get a motion in a second. We can get some discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Douglas, you want to kind of walk through this a little bit?
Yeah, I think you all are familiar with the, with the service, and this is specifically taking beach, emptying the beach cans, trash cans. This is a transition away from the yellow barrels that we've historically had serviced from the beach with the hopper, as we call it. We are going to a roadside service with a conventional, a more conventional trash collection truck. It will require rolling back of certain cans at, at busier beach accesses by this contractor. So we've been working for a while on this kind of model of how we think we would like the trash collection to happen. One of the challenges we've had is that we've only had one responsive bidder. We typically try to get more than one. Because we only had one, we held that bid. We tried to get more interest from other agencies, but we could not get other companies to bid on the, on the work. So unfortunately, we only have one bid. I will say, the good news is, from our standpoint, they were the low bid on our dumpster service about a year ago. They also are doing the same service at Kewa currently, so they, they know the service. They know, they know what it takes. We're very confident in the, in the service provider, so we feel good about that. The other part of it is, we are a little bit, we would be outside of budget if we take kind of our typical days of collection. There's, there's also a little bit of a, we haven't always done the full 165 days. It's been a little bit more on call. So that gets us to a point where we are, we think we'll be about $34,000 over budget in this particular line item. Part of the year has obviously been paid out to the prior contractor, and part of the year would be paid out to this future contractor. Happy to answer any questions about that.
And I mean, I thought we've talked about this in the past, but the future, the current contractors leaving.
That's correct.
So we-
This is it?
This is it. And Trident is doing our, our commercial dumpsters, and from what I've heard, everyone's been very happy with them. And, you know, so don't want to make it sound like this is it, but it's it.
You do a good job.
Yes.
You do a good job.
Yes.
Have you reached out to Kewa, or are they happy with the work that Trident's been doing? Any idea?
I, I think, I think we have, haven't we? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So nod yes?
Douglas, you want to introduce Sean to the community?
This is Sean Cooster, our new deputy city administrator. Very excited to have a helpful set of hands upstairs in City Hall, and excited to have him on board, so.
Welcome, Sean.
Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is consideration of ATAX grant to the Lutheran Retreat Center for 10,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. Douglas, anything to add? And this is already going through ATAX committee.
That's correct.
And this is a, the ATAX committee felt like this was a good use of the grant money
that's in our, that's in our budget for these applications. They would be beautifying that parking lot, partially funded by their finances and, and this grant.
Questions or comments?
Comment. Lutheran Center has always been a good friend to the city. In the aftermath, where can you go? They open their doors to us for emergency personnel stay there, and we had City Hall there, and Fire Department, and Command Center, or Area Department. And they're most gracious way back then, helped us get through a very difficult time.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C is consideration of proposal from CSE for final design bidding and construction administration for the major renourishment project for 669,508. You see, we have it, most of it budgeted in fiscal '27 out of the Beach Preservation Fund. We have a motion and a second, get to discussion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Douglas, anything you want to?
No, only what you've already alluded to, that this was, this was work that was contemplated in next fiscal year, so, so it would be an unbudgeted expense in this year. And it is specifically for this, this is a project that has been, that has been submit, permits for environmental, I'm sorry, applications for environmental permits are in and underway. This proposal would allow for the final design of the project, for the bid package to go out and to handle the bidding, as well as the construction administration for this project.
Go, John.
Douglas, what, can you answer to what we had public comments tonight, why we wouldn't put this out for bid?
Well, I, you know, we, I did see a letter earlier in the week about that question, and, and we have, we typically, and I don't know that we have ever actually had a call with Desiree, have we ever stopped kind of midstream in a project with a, with a, with an engineering firm, or with a project, stopped midstream after permits have been applied for, and engaged anybody else to, to handle construction administration and bidding? To my knowledge, and to Desiree's knowledge, we hadn't done that in, in the past. So a little bit of that is just prior practice, our procurement code contemplates that we would not do that, it's exempt from competitive pricing. So I think it's, it's a combination of just prior practice and the code. Nothing in there says that we couldn't, we could not do that if that was the will of council, so certainly could be, could be a pause and, and a change of firms if you all chose to do that.
Well, I, I guess where I am with it, it seems like, I mean, I've read the procurement code, and it seems like there's a crack for us to get through. But on a project at this scope and this magnitude and this important to the city, I'm not so sure we should be squeezing through that crack. This is a $670,000 unbudgeted expense we're looking at, but it's, I think the consequences are much more than that. It's, it's to manage, I think probably the biggest, what will be the biggest project the city's ever undertaken. I mean, we're talking about, you know, up to $30 million, a multimillion dollar project. And to me, I just think that, I understand that the work that CSE has done, and appreciative of the work they've done so far, but there's a significant amount of remaining work to be done on this project, and for us not to at least entertain some other kind of a proposal where we know there's firms available, seems like it's a disjustice, an unjust thing for us to sit, for us to act on. I think we need to do our diligence and make sure it's the right decision. I don't want to slow down the project in any way, so if there's a certain piece of this that we need to approve tonight, then we approve it, but the significant portions of it, I think we ought to at least entertain another proposal and another, some other thoughts. Could, you know, even, if there's something that can save us a million dollars on the project, it's a, that's a significant amount of money that we should at least entertain other thoughts on. That's my opinion.
There, rest of the way.
Yeah, I, I, I read the Foulson report three times, and some good recommendations that they had. They, they had taken the data that was already provided to us by CSE over the years, and some other agencies, and just, and taken that, recapped it nicely, made some recommendations, and certainly appreciated, and there may be some of those things that we would do in the future. However, it seems to me that with the sense of urgency we're always talking about with beach renourishment, this, we have an opportunity to get sand on the beach in critical areas pretty quickly. We've got permitting already in, if we can get it approved, as I understood from what we were discussing at the workshop, there's a good possibility we could get this approved early, and even have it completed during the summertime. And I think if we stop things now and start entertaining other alternatives at this point, then we're just going to slow it down, we're going to go through another season and have issues that we could have, you know, taken care of early next spring and through the summer. I'm in favor of going ahead. What we're, what we're looking at tonight on this, on this consideration is a proposal for 669,000 for this portion of the renourishment work. That's what's on the agenda, not the bigger discussion of what we're going to do going forward, whether it be terminal groins, breakwaters, whatever. So I'm in favor of us moving ahead and approving this, get the work underway, and see it, see it through.
Is it, would it be possible for us to approve a portion of this, like the steps one and two tonight, and then put out for bid the, the more engineering, construction side of it? So that way, we'd be moving forward with the work that needs to be done the most urgently, and it would give us a chance to get some bids from other contractors and see what's out there and see what options we have. I mean, as long as, as long as it's not slowing things down, as long as we're, you know, continuing to move on, and, and we maybe, you know, we could, I'm assuming we can put that in request for bids, is that, you know, this has to be done, like, absolutely on our timeframe, not yours, you know, and, and see, see where we go from there.
So I guess, Stephen, I don't know if you want to come, because half, Katie, to your point, I think 50-ish thousand is for kind of the next two steps, if you will. Half the bid is, Stephen, I think, 340, whatever, thousand, if it is for somebody from your firm to be onsite, surveying, oversighting, sand placement and such, right?
Correct. There are several different tasks that are kind of included in this, and they all somewhat tie in together. I will note that there's about a $70,000 was a contingency line item that we included just to account for contingency, and I understand the city sometimes does that on their own, so that's something that I just wanted to note. As far as your question goes, Ms. Myers, is, I don't know, I kind of have to talk in our office and with our group on, the next step really is putting together a final design, and then putting those into a bid specification package that is really a, an engineering firm's, not property, but that's our project that we're designing, and then to turn it over at that point for another group to come and implement that project is not something that I'm sure that works very well, because they may not agree with everything that we did, we may not agree with everything they're going to do, but it's our, you know, it's our stamp on the documents that are going out. So I'm not sure that there's a easy logical breakpoint. That's kind of why we phase it, phase one is this breakpoint, where we, we did the permitting, that's out there, you'll have a city permit that they own that, you know, can be utilized by anybody, but I don't think the next, I don't think there's a logical breakpoint in that next step, and I, I do think there would be a pretty significant delay in implementing something if we're trying to get, you know, a bid package out early next year.
Yeah. Steve, I, I mean, I'm, I'm under the understanding that it's not uncommon for these proposals to be separated into like two tasks, two task orders. You've got the architecture upfront, and then you've got the construction and construction management, and then, and the engineering side of this. I think what, I think what we're asking is, and if I look at the schedule, and I'd, I'd really love a walkthrough on this proposal, because we haven't had one. I've got several questions, but when I look at the breakpoint here, if we did task one and task two, tasks three and four are already covered. So it's the, it's the project planning liaison and review, shoreline and geotechnical surveys, those are the first two items. If I look at your timeline, the next item doesn't even start kicking in till around February. So when I take a look at that, and again, it's the, it's the upfront work, I think if we were to put out an RFP for a three-week response or something for the rest of it, I don't think, you know, based on your own schedule, it doesn't sound like we're going to slow anything up. And as a matter of fact, and, you know, I kind of look at it this way, I was a member of the ad hoc committee for two years, and the ad hoc committee did get two other recommendations. I think competition is good, I think that we might find some other solutions that can go along and augment what you already have done. But I feel like we are just completely discarding the beach ad hoc committee's recommendations, solutions, and everything that they were all about, and we're driving down a sole, we're here we are on a sole source again, found out about it on Friday, and we've got a lot of moving parts here. I, I don't see any harm in looking at it from this perspective of splitting up these tasks, getting some additional information, and ensuring that we have the best solution for, again, the largest project in the history of the city. This is going to be a 30, 35 million dollar project, and it's got to go right because of everything that's at stake here. So I, I'm of the mindset, let's get some healthy competition, let's not just do things because that's the way we've always done them, and let's see what's going on with the second opinion. We've got Foulson, we've got the other North Carolina firm, those are two firms that are already up to speed on everything we do here because of these second opinions, and I think we would be shorting the city and the residents and our pocketbooks if we didn't take a look at what's out there for alternatives. So that's kind of where I am. And actually, I would like to make a friendly motion to amend the, the recommendation or the motion on the table to include items one and two, and we can have conversation if we need to include any more, and that we put the rest out, that we follow procurement practices, and that we put the rest out for bid in a very short timeframe. And again, I'm reading your schedule, this doesn't jeopardize the schedule.
Second.
Yeah, Stephen, speak to scheduling.
Yeah, I'm.
Practice.
Pull this schedule up.
I've got it here if you want it, Stephen, hard copy.
If I can interrupt, because it's on scheduling, could you go through a timeline of where we are now, where we are with the permitting process, how long that's going to take, and when you expect to start the other parts of the project? Give us an idea of what kind of time we're talking about here.
Sure. So I spoke with the Corps and the state this week, the public notice should be submitted tomorrow, or released tomorrow, so the public notice period will have started at that point, which starts a 30-day clock for the public notice period. While all that's going on, and this is all still under phase one work with the permitting, reviewing public comments and responding appropriately, right now, the biggest holdup is going to be Fish and Wildlife Service and National Marine Fisheries Service who are furloughed due to the shutdown. They are typically the ones that have the longest timeframe on their reviews, so we have to make every push we can to try to get that sped up and through, which will require, you know, looking at it from every angle and, you know, not pressuring, but building enough support from every different side to try to get that pushed through. So that'll be ongoing, and I think best case scenario right now, our permits could be issued as early as February or March. Worst case scenario, maybe May. And I think very strongly we can get it through more quickly. Looking at the schedule that's in the proposal, I think November 2025, it says initiate phase two services, planning and final design. That includes already working on the specifications, the final design, the drawings, and all that kind of stuff, so that would start immediately, not, you know, a month from now and then getting into the holidays.
So Stephen, that's task five and six.
Five and six, yes. And a lot of these things tend to, they can, there's overlap between some of these tasks. So to kind of walk through the proposal, the planning, task one, management coordination liaison, that's meeting like this, responding to comments, letters, interacting with the city, interacting with agencies as necessary, and contractors, whoever it may be, to kind of just handle management of the project, and there's some identified ta, or some tasks and scopes of work within that. Again, this is a time and expense based contract, it's not a lump sum, so you'd only be billed for what is out there. Task two was the, any additional field data that would need to be collected to incorporate into the final design. That may include updated surveys of sandbags and walkovers, and anything that we need to build into the nourishment, the design that we don't already have. We're going to utilize the existing monitoring work that we're doing for the city to do most of that, so we're not repeating efforts there. But there may be something that comes up that we need to address to have in the final design. Again, tasks three and four, those are already covered under our phase one work that we're doing right now. Final plan specifications for beach nourishment, that is kind of the bulk of the, the project plan. It's taking what we presented as a possibility in the permit, and then refining that and putting that onto drawings and specifications that we can put out into a bid package. So we're adjusting fill limits, we're determining the final volume, we're finding the bar area, we're working with contractors kind of ahead of time to let them know that the project's coming out, and if we need to seek any revisions, we are making adjustments to the project that may come out of the permitting process, whether that's bar area revisions, beach fill revisions, and anything that the city needs to do, including, you know, the actual details of the design.
Can I, can I just ask a question while you're there? So if the permit isn't expected to be completed until March to May sometime, so you have to recycle back through that, or, I mean, it, one's dependent on the other, is that correct?
Yes, a lot of times, we try to always have the permit in hand before releasing a bid. I mean, that's ideal. But in a case like this, where we're really trying to take advantage of a potential weather window, we can release a project for bid with anticipated conditions, and we work very closely with the state and the federal, the Corps of Engineers to know what conditions are going to be placed on the permit that we can include in the bid documents, and then make the bid contingent on receptive permits and acceptability of any conditions that may alter the work or alter the level of effort that the contractor has to do.
Because those conditions would come from one of the approving agencies?
Yes.
Does that cause them to put more risk in the project, though, which causes their price to go way up?
Well, I think we would bid it under a certain set of assumed conditions that we're very comfortable with, that we've done for multiple projects, both in the state and in other areas. We're very up to date on, you know, new policies like the 2020 Sarbo that National Marine Fisheries put out, that has very specific restrictions for dredging in the summer, which essentially cover most of the other agencies' worries about like sea turtles and things. So we put those in so the contractor knows about it, but then we give them the ability that if something significant changes in those conditions, they would have the ability to come back to the city and request additional funds if necessary for that specific monitoring item. That may be trawling for turtles in front of the dredge that, you know, we've never had to do with the Cutterhead dredge, but, you know, something like that came out of the woodwork. Rather than giving them an open-ended uncertainty, we want to kind of give them a very confident set of conditions, and then they can make an adjustment if something unexpected comes.
Stephen, if I can just kind of boil down what, what you just said, is what I'm hearing, and please tell me if this is correct or not, if we want to have sand on the beach before next year storm season, next fall, task one through six have to start now. Is that correct?
In my opinion, it does. You could try to push it off, it's just, the later you push it off, the more you're pushing that bid process off, and dredgers may find additional work, may not, may not have the ability that, you know, we, we've already let them know that this project's going to be out there, you know, with an estimated scope and timeline, but if something comes up and they're still waiting on this to come out, they may take advantage of that.
So if we move the line down to task six, and put it out for bid, the rest of it for, you know, a three-week period, that's not going to jeopardize anything, correct?
I'm not sure if I'm understanding you correctly.
So what I'm hearing, and I think Blair mentioned this again, it seems like the logical place then to, again, task one, task two, is you're basically the architect, you're, you're getting the bids and everything, but then what we're, what we're talking about is the management, construction, and the bulk of the work.
Which is going to be probably dependent and separated, based on the timing of the permit being generated, and then you're going to have to go back to the, to the dredgers. And I guess another question I have, do you have confirmation that dredgers are even available, since this is a
available, since this is a backlog business?
Yes. I've spoken with multiple dredgers, I spoke with the vice president of a very large dredge company this week about this project, and they were very excited about the opportunity.
Okay, I have just a couple of questions. You keep talking about design. This is more or less geotechnical design, there are no structures involved at this point?
Correct, there are no structures.
Basically, in your bailiwick of what you, your specialty. Then the other thing is, I guess there's a, it looks like there's a four-month window before the permit could be issued, that we're, that we're arguing about, talking about right now. We can start final plans, design now, with the idea that there will probably be final revisions after the permit is finally approved for those, hopefully just tweaks in the plans. So in other words, instead of having to wait to start the plans until the permit, we could start them now without too much increase in cost, just a minor. Is that right?
I think we would, I mean, we definitely want to start the plans now, for sure, and if something comes up where we're, you know, modifying that, it would all kind of be included in what the scope already has, we kind of account for that.
Okay. So we could, since, since your firm has brought us to this, this place now with all of the information and all that you've developed, the final plan specs and construction documents would probably be most efficiently prepared by your office, in my opinion. And then the bid coordination, because you're the engineer, designated engineer, you would also probably be in charge for that. So I see that, that is a logical cutoff point for now, if we decided we needed to have a break at all. My greatest concern is we need that sand as fast as possible, and I don't want to do anything to delay.
Can we modify?
And then the second thing, let me just finish my thought for this. It does not preclude that after this project, we go forward with maybe considering structural additions later on, terminal groins or whatever. And if you recall when we, I know that the Fort and Olson group that I listened to actually said to get those structures, the permitting, design, and approval and construction of those is going to take years. So we go forward with the sand placement now at the greatest speed possible, anticipating that we consider other improvements afterwards.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the appropriate form from that, but I would disagree that a structural option in certain conditions has to be years down the road. For instance, if groins were something that, you know, the city wanted to move forward with and want to move forward with quickly, you could place enough sand and likely will place enough sand in this upcoming nourishment at both ends of the island that would satisfy the trapping capacity requirement for the groins for several years on end. So in theory, you could start permitting for a groin, you know, today, have that permit in 12 to 18 months, and still build the structures within the nourished beach area. That's a very viable option. So just wanted to mention that.
I guess I would add, to that point, we actually have, in this year's budget, the design of those groins, and in next year's budget, the construction of up to four groins. So we've, we've definitely contemplated all along doing the design of groins this year and building them next year. We've talked, talked a little bit around that, and we have different kind of points of view, but it's always been in the plan to do that.
Just to clarify, Anderson brought this up, and some other people have too. Are you the engineer of record for these plans and specifications?
I'm not the engineer of record. We have an, on staff. Joe Huggins is our engineer of record there.
And is he, what's his involvement?
He is kind of a construction administration, he's not a coastal expert, but he has worked on building schools and things like that. So he looks at construction plans and specifications and helps us take our scientific and geological and kind of 40-years experience on beach nourishment design and puts that, reviews that. We also have a coastal engineering graduate out of UNCW who passed the PE recently. He's about 12 months out of getting his official stamp that's working on staff now. Not that it matters, but I've taken all the Corps' work to sit for the FE, I just have seven kids and trying to run the company, so it's hard to study for it and, and take that, so.
But you're a staff person, the one stamping the?
Yes.
So does Joe work for you, or?
Yes.
And what's his, what's his involvement with our beach? That's what I'm wanting to know, is like, has he, has he been down here, has he seen what we're dealing with?
He's seen the beach, but he's not a coastal engineer. He is a civil engineer that, again, he'll look through the contracts, the specifications, and that's really where he comes into play.
So he's just putting a stamp on plans?
I wouldn't say it like that, but.
That's his, that's his job?
Yes.
Kay.
I'm a PE, but I won't sign those drawings for you, so let's just say they're, they're PEs and they're PEs, so we better be careful about that. But I think if we decided that we wanted to consider something, another firm, it would be, I think, when we, when we got to the point of deciding whether we want to do drawings, design drawings or not, we could then put that out to bid, I think separately.
Yeah, I'd like to modify the, the amendment to the motion to include items five and six, so that what we could do is, it seems like that's the logical breakpoint. I think Councilwoman Anderson said the same thing, and it seems like that would be a logical. I still think we should try to honor the procurement code and do the best we can to get as much information as we can during, on a competitive bid. It sounds like there's absolutely no risk, you know, I'm all for putting sand on the beach tomorrow, so I don't want to risk anything as well. But it seems to me like there's no risk in drawing the line at below number six on the task and putting the rest out for bid to see what we can get, and we could probably do that within a three-week period. I don't think that's, I don't think, I think the other firms are going to be up to speed, and they're going to welcome the opportunity to bid on this as well.
So you're drawing the First Amendment, or what's going on?
I'm amending the amendment to include item five and six. I'm not withdrawing.
For clarity, since I'm not looking right at what y'all are looking, is that, are you skipping three and four? What are we doing?
Three and four is already covered under another task order. So it's, it's item, include item one, include item two, task number one, two, four, and five, and that we go out for bid for the rest.
One, two, five, six.
Five and six, Scott.
Can I?
Yeah, five.
One through six.
One through six.
Correct. One through six.
I'd just like to add that we did do this process in back in 2016, when we were going through the last project, we went through the, you know, RFQ process, and we were selected on that, so it's not, you know, unprecedented. And I have no problem with it at all, I understand completely, so I get that. I do want to have the opportunity to speak with our ENO carrier, though, just to make sure that if we, what our risk is as a company, if we put out a set of drawings that are signed and a bid package that, that we put together, do we carry any risk if another firm implements that project? I just want to have the opportunity to have that discussion with them to understand where we fall on that, because that would be a pretty significant thing for us.
I guess, sorry, Steven, go ahead.
No, I'll just say, you know, for that construction admin part of that, I will say that we've, we built more projects than anybody else in the state by far, excluding the Corps of Engineers, going over 40-year history. I put our rates up against anybody and our track record up against anybody, so I'm not really, again, I get the process, but as much as I can try to alleviate your concerns on that, that part is a hand-holding thing that takes a relationship with the dredgers and the community and is a critical part of the project, so I get both sides of it.
I guess, Steven, speak to that a little bit. You meant, you touched on it earlier about you've had conversations with at least two dredge companies at this point, and John's comment about, you know, where can we save money? And I know, I think last time at the workshop, you know, a dredger that's in the area already finishing up a project about the time we need to start, I mean, there's potential savings there, this is all a question mark rather than a statement, potential savings from a mobilization standpoint, if they're in the area and we happen to fit their work schedule.
Are you talking about Hilton?
Marinex, yeah, Marinex.
Yep. There's a ton of ways to save money on a dredge project, and I think I sent the city a pretty long email that kind of outlined a lot of those one time, and I can resend that. But it, it's from dredge availability, it's how you structure a contract with their uncertainty, weather delays, you know, liquidated damages, anything that the dredger has to assume that they're going to incur, physical factors like bar area layout, dredge depths, obviously the summertime thing is a huge one. You know, there's 100 different things that go into it.
And Steven, talk about the flip side of what we're doing, and I'll give you my opinion in a minute, but say somebody came to your firm and said, we would like you, if they structured a bid the same way you did, we would like you to cover seven and eight on something that's been designed, would you, would you bid on that?
I think I would. I think that's a much lower risk scenario than designing the project.
I mean, you're putting somebody on the beach for four months, three months, whatever the number.
You're there every day, kind of hand-holding with the contractor, taking sediment samples, doing surveys, any kind of day-to-day issues that arise, dealing with shutdowns, and then you have people in the office doing pay requests and processing data to make sure that the daily summittals are matching up and all that kind of thing. It's a very extensive effort during construction, it's a huge project.
You mentioned surveys, do you say that?
Yes, so the dredger's doing surveys daily to verify the quantities that they're placing. Sometimes it's partial surveys, if there's a weather event, they'll survey before and after to see how the sand's moved around, so you're constantly adjusting the field templates and design. We do our own independent surveys throughout the project, just as a quality control check.
Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. For my, my money, I would like my motion to be voted on up or down and not amended. If we fail, then we can come back and talk about the other. We're, we are talking about potentially monkeying up the schedule on this project, and we already have a very tight deadline. It takes months to get all this stuff through. Steve is here, he can do the, all of the work. Soon as the permits are issued, we're on the ground and we're pumping sand. And I don't see any reason to, to risk doing anything other than that on this project.
Go ahead, Jan.
I would just like, one thing clarified is, Douglas, it's probably up to you to describe this, what was the, the selection process that we've gone through in hiring CSE at the beginning?
So I do recall a request for proposals.
Are you talking 30 years ago, or this?
Well, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, we're calling this a no-bid contract, so I want to know whether that's true or not, is really what I'm asking.
I do know that we requested proposals and qualifications fairly recently, and I'm drawing a blank on whether that was the monitoring. I know we did it for monitoring, and I believe that we did it at the beginning of this process, but I, I can't swear to that right here and now. Do you, do you recall?
That's my recollection as well. Going further back, we were originally hired by the Wild Dunes Community Association and did a feasibility study on the East End in 2007, and then they transferred management of the beach to the city, the city kind of took that lead role with Linda Tucker, and so we started working for the city directly then. And then again, I think there was the RFQ process, I believe was for the nourishment, but I'd, I'd have to double-check that as well.
When was that, what?
The first one, '08?
The first project was '08. There was not, as, as far as I can recall, I started in '07, so it was right around that time. I don't remember if that was.
Anytime recently, I guess, how recent was it?
16, I think, 16 or 17.
16 or 17, yeah.
We just did it, we just did this, and we did not have, and I think it may have been the five-year monitoring.
After the 2018 project.
After a five-year expiration, we went back out.
Correct.
I would have to check that.
Yes, for the surveying, for the monitoring.
We went out, that RFP again, or?
Yes.
So that would have been 2021?
No, that, that was 2024, I believe, for the surveying part of it, for the monitoring.
Fairly recently, yeah, within the last few years, but that was not this work. That was monitoring different, different work altogether, that's the surveying up and down the beach. I do not recall how we started this process two years ago, if that was, if that was an RFQ, an RFI, or if it was, it's not, again, kind of as the original question from John, these professional services are exempt from, from that process, so it's very possible that that process was not used. But I just don't.
Is that, is that also engineering, though? I mean, I know certain professional services are, but like, if you're, if you're building a building?
That's correct.
So any, any ENO is excluded.
But RFPs go out.
We do it, I mean, we, we do do it regularly. I just don't recall exactly the process on this one.
I think the code says you can do it, but you don't have to do it. And I, all I'm suggesting, this is a big, major project, and I don't want to slow it up, and I don't think by going through number five or whatever, we said six, is going to slow the project down, and I think it does dilute. We may learn something in putting it out that saves money, or we may learn that, Steven, as you said, you know, you respect that process, and you think it's, you're not disagreeing with it, we may choose Steven's. He may be the, the company that we end up, but at least we've done our diligence on a very major, significant project.
Yeah, and I would just say, Steven's firm has done our last two, or only two renourishments, you know, and I think the last one was 17, 18, was when he did, and that was a 15-ish million-dollar project. You know, today's dollars, that'd probably be 23 or 24 million dollars, so similar, similar-sized project. You know, I just, and these guys have handled these first two projects fine, and it's been good. I just, I think trying to slice and dice, and I don't think we're compromising at all what we did at the beach ad hoc meeting. You know, the second opinion, to Jan, I think, to your point, is, you know, if we want to change our path and go hard structures in addition to, to renourishment work, you know, that's a separate conversation that this city needs to make in putting hard structures on our beach or in the ocean, that's been recommended. You know, so I think that, we could start that process, to your point, now, you know, looking at both Olson, there were two or three times in there, they said, you know, what they were recommending required significant investigation, significant study, significant work. I mean, we could parallel this thing very easily, let you, let your firm focus on the renourishment, let another firm focus on, okay, we're going to put the sand on here, or what do we use to trap it, if we want to trap it? Again, that's significantly changing the look and feel and use of our beach if we go hard structure, and that's fine, if that's where we want to go, I just think we need to spend some time there before we go there, but I think we could parallel this thing. I think to Blair's point, we've got multiple motions, and Nicole, we're going to have to unwind this farc here in a minute, but this is a very tight timeline. Steven's already had conversations with dredgers, there are potential savings farc already. You know, the savings aren't going to be in the $300,000, somebody sitting on our beach watching it. You know, the savings are going to be in the conversations and relationships you or other, you know, have with the, with a dredger, and I think that's going to allow us to pick up some significant savings. You know, we're beating on the state, you know, trying to get some money in this year and next year's budget cycle. We're going to vote on that here in a minute as well, but I would, I would be very much in favor of going with Blair's motion of let's approve this, let's let Steven team put theirs back and go after and get it and get this permit done as fast as we can. We need sand on our beach, and I'll just, anything we start doing to monkey with the process and the timing and splitting contract work just feels fault to me.
Let's vote on the, let's vote on the amendment and then get on with Blair's motion.
Before we do that, your, your motion, your original friendly amendment or motion, really, was to do one and two, to split it off at one and two. Then you came in and said five and six. Councilman Gosian, you seconded the motion the first time, nobody said anything about seconding that five and six bit, so.
John did.
I did not hear any of that.
John, yeah, he did. He seconded that.
So you have to vote on the motion on the floor first, which is the amendment, before we can go back to the original.
So which amendment is it, the one?
Five and six.
To down.
One to six.
Splitting it to five and six.
Tasks one through six.
Right.
Mayor, if I may, as I understand it, with this amendment, if we did one through six only, we would not be able to go out and bid on construction because the plans aren't done. And so the plans would all have to be done, and the specs would all have to be done, that's going to take a few months before we could even go out for bid for the other part of it. So all of this can't be done concurrently.
That's task five, boy, task five.
Right, it's doing the plans.
Plans, so he would do one through six, and then that would only leave construction administration and final survey.
To the majority, you got the architect and you got the contractor, general contractor. So six gets you to the, through the architectural phase.
Call the vote. Blair, you good or not?
So we're voting on cutting it, the vote now is to cut it off at six as opposed to going with the entire one through eight.
Correct.
All right, and if I can ask for eyes, show of hands, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Just the three of you. I didn't, okay, thank you. And those in favor?
Of one through eight?
No, now, those were, these three were in favor of one through six. Opposed through one, opposed to this amendment.
Right.
Show of hands, thank you. The motion fails.
Didn't you need to go back to the First Amendment motion?
So now we go back to the original motion, which is consideration of a proposal from CSE for final design bidding, Construction Administration for the major renourishment project in the amount of $669,508.
So do we keep discussing, or?
There's a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for that. If you want to go back and discuss, you're able to do that.
I'd just like to make one comment. It's not an amendment, but I would recommend that we, going forward, renew a contract with whoever the firm is by going out to bid after this project.
Or now, now. I don't think we have to wait, though. Like, I think he, you even said, like, if we wanted to start thinking about hard structures or something else.
Yes.
That could start tomorrow, so like, sorry, I don't, I didn't mean to cut you off, but like, not wait until the end of this project, but like, for the next project.
Anything that entails additional work beyond this contract, because it's about time. I mean, we can't go too long without, I think, because of our obligation to our constituents, I think, to renew, review and renew contracts periodically.
Scott.
But that's just.
Yeah, I want to echo what Jan said, I think we really do need to get into the practice of, we only sole source when we absolutely have to, not when we don't have to go out for bid. And I think that we've got to change that practice, because I think we're shorting the community, I think we're shorting options, we're shorting learnings on everything we do. And I would like to have a conversation at some point about how we change that model from bidding, that's just basic procurement practice. So I'm going to support this, because it is the only option we have, and I don't want to slow up sand on the beach. So we'll get on with the vote, but I just hope that we stop this practice of sole sourcing everything, I think it's costing us way too money, much money, and I think we're not able to explore the best options for the community.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Patrick, thank you. Looks out in Boards and Commissions Report, Board of Zoning Appeals, Minutes are Attached, Planning Commission, Minutes are Attached, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, Minutes are Attached, Environmental Advisory Committee, Minutes are Attached. Ordinances, Resolutions and Petitions, Second Reading, Ordinance 2025-11, glyphosate ban on city property, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. You need further discussion or comments on this one? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was going to say, I was going to say thank you to our public works for being so helpful and open and awesome, so thank you.
Carrie, you're good, too. You're far-bell by a public work.
She's bookended.
Did we already vote? You got that?
Yes.
Sorry. Ordinance 2025-07, shark fishing regulations, there a motion?
Second, or first? I vote second.
Comments, questions?
Peanut butter.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolutions and Proclamations, Resolution 2025-11, a resolution to commit funding in support of SCP RT's beach renourishment grant funding, and if you can make this motion to waive reading, that would be great.
Make the motion waive reading.
Waive a reading. Second. I got one question.
Yeah, we got, go ahead.
Who's talking?
I don't know.
We got an update.
Who are you?
I'm just wondering, no, I read the thing, and it seems like it's tied to the beach renourishment. So, and the funds can be released in February, though, so do we have to wait until, when can we get paid the money? Does it have to be completed, the work, or what's the tide to the money release?
So I will just, as kind of way of a major update on all of this, we've been having conversations with the PRT staff about kind of our best path forward, and I think they are going to release the funds when they get, when the grant gets released. We will then have to send back anything that doesn't get spent, is generally how I think they will operate. But I would say that they have, they have asked us to, because as the mayor mentioned earlier, we have this current fiscal year of funds, which is $1,005,000, they are trying to get the state budget to include additional funds next year, so they have asked if we could update the application, we've been in contact with them about what we're going to apply for, and they have suggested that we put in there the total ask that we could make of the state. So that would be, this is a matching grant, so it's half of the city's fund, and then it's also controlled by, it can't go on any parts of the private beach. So when you kind of do that ciphering and you take out the Wild Dunes portions that they can't pay for, you then look at the portions that are private, it gets to a grant request of them of 5.3 million. So in the resolution, right now it says 1.5 million, I guess I would ask that the motion include an amendment to change that to 5.3 million. That would allow them to consider it once. If all they can get is $1,005,000, that's all we'll get, but if they, if they can give us $1,005,000 out of this year's budget and then give us the additional amount to get up to the full 5.3, that would allow them to just release it once it's, once it's available to them. But as I understand it, the money, the first $1,005,000 would be February, if money makes it into the, into next year's budget, for some reason it would be October and not February, I'm not sure why.
So that gets me to my question, though, about the $1,500,000, because if, for some reason, it's all tied to beach renourishment, for some reason it's delayed until after the, to the second budget, the state budget, and we have to spend, we may not spend $1,500,000 on that, is what I'm saying. So can't we tie in all the work that we've already done, has to be reimbursed for all the sandbags and everything else?
They do not, they do not operate like FEMA, where you have to spend it by the deadline, or it's nullified. They would allow us to spend that $1,500,000.
It can carry over?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good, then.
So all that to say, if you could, and just for illustrative purposes, the draft of the applications behind that, this obviously would need to get changed, the budget in there, the request for there, we plan on amending all of that to represent a 5.3 million-dollar request of the state, so if you can make that part of the motion, that would be helpful.
Nicole, do we need to withdraw that motion and just make a new one, or amend it? How do you want to do it?
We'll, if you want to do a friendly motion for something like that.
Amendment.
Amendment to.
I'll make that amendment at 5.3.
Second. Thank you. And Douglas, I think, again, our plan is to have that grant and all the supporting documentation in this week.
That's correct.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Proclamation 2025-03, a proclamation to declare November 2025 as World Pancreatic Cancer Day on the Isle of Palms. Again, if you can waive reading in your motion, that would be great.
Motion to waive reading.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There being no further business?[1799.01]